Five, four, three, two, one. Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting of August eighth. I'll ask that you all join us in rise and singing of our national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise. The true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our national anthem. Today, we're going to start with a moment to pause and honor our fellow councillor, John Larners, who recently passed. He was a friend, a colleague, a community leader, and someone very dear to us. So allow us this time, in your own way and in silence, to reserve some gratitude and grace and time to reflect for the passing of John. Thank you. And thank you. I would like to say that John will be dearly missed by council and the entire organization. Our deepest sympathy go out to Donna, his children, his fur babies, his family, and his many, many friends in the community. So thank you for that. Councillor O'Connor, I see you in the queue.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We'll miss you, John.
All right.
I'd like to move. Council adopt the minutes of the City Council Meeting held July eleventh, 2022, as presented.
Thank you for that, Councillor O'Connor. That motion is in order. Motion to receive the minutes of the council meeting held July eleventh, as presented. Seeing no one in the queue, please vote. Councillor Toole votes in favor. And that's carried unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
That motion is in order. Not aware of any reditions or omissions. I'll call the question. Please vote. Mayor Clayton votes in favor. And that too carries unanimously. All right, item number six on our agenda today is our delegations. For those of you who are watching, or if you're here in the chambers, our delegation portion of the meeting is an opportunity for you come to speak to council. The afternoon portion of any council meeting is open to anybody to come speak to council. You do not need to let us know ahead of time that you plan to come. However, there is also an evening session where you can come to speak to council. If you choose to come to the evening session, we do ask that you let us know ahead of time. There is a form online that you can fill out to let us know you're coming. However, for the afternoon session, you do not need to let us know. We did have one delegation let us know that they were coming. On our agenda today is a Mr Mark Taylor. If you are Mr Taylor, please come forward, introduce yourself, sit at the table up here. I'll turn your microphone up, phone on. And if, just for those who are watching online, and I just quickly wanted to recognize that councillor Berg is joining the council meeting online today, and councillor Thiessen, for those who may be watching, is away. But please, sir, take five minutes. I know you did let us know what you were coming about, but take five minutes. Go through what you'd like to explain to council today, and then council will have an opportunity for questions as well.
Do I have to press this button?
No, you're good to go.
Good to go.
Thank you.
So Mayor Jackie Clayton, ladies and gentlemen, people of the council, I'm here today. My name is Mark Taylor. I am a member of the community here in Grand Prairie. I'm also a businessman within Grand Prairie. I work in the oil and gas industry in the Health and Safety, Environmental and Security Division for a major oil and gas company. I'm here today to speak on behalf of what is going on in the city regarding the rising crime that has affected myself, my partner Elaine Mills, small business in general, what we've been, what we've come into contact with. So what I'm talking here today is about, life is a risk in what we do. The biggest risk of all is not doing anything about it. So you either want to be a part of the solution, or you want to be a part of the problem. I'm a very vocal person within our community. I work closely with small business. I consult on small business, and I care. And that's my biggest thing, is that I do care about the people in this community. And unfortunately, why should Grand Prairie residents have to consistently live with high crime rate that's going on? And I can speak firsthand because I've been subjected to it. And when I say subjected to it, people ask me, why is it so hard to trust people? Well, you've got to trust people to understand and tell them the truth. And I'm telling you the truth today because I feel that nothing's being done. This city is the third highest in Alberta for crime right now, the ninth in Canada. That's sad when we look at developing the downtown core and understanding that small business is the key, the heart of this community. We put ourselves out there. Like I said, my partner who runs a small business at the farmer's market and has been subjected nine times to violent acts of verbal abuse, physical abuse, spitting, throwing stuff by people who, and I'm not targeting everybody, but there's an element of undesirable people who consistently commit acts of crime, whether it be theft from a vehicle, theft from somebody's residence, theft from a small business, and therefore are encountering these people on a daily basis. It's wrong on every count. The police, who do a phenomenal job, the peace officers, the mobile units that try to help in the best way possible in clearing up what is clearly going on down there. And if nobody can see what's going on, you're clearly not looking. I leave early at 5:30 in the morning, and when I get four young men accost me outside of my apartment building asking me for money in a threatening abusive manner, that's putting myself in danger. What do I do about it? I've reported many times to the police. I've worked with the police. I've worked as an investigator, which is part of my job, in ensuring that I am an asset and a help to the managers in the apartment buildings in clearing up the drugs that are clearly evident on our streets. The downtown core, people being subjected. My girlfriend now is at a point where she's afraid to go to work. That's not right. She should be able to go to work, to open up her shop, to give a valuable service to this community, to this great city. I've been here for four years. I remember Grand Prairie when it was just a strip, and I've seen it grow. But I came back and took the opportunity to be a part of this community and be a vocal part of the community and support small business. And that's what I do. I buy local. I support local. But I don't feel enough is being done to protect the good, hardworking people of this city and subjecting them to the crime and the drug element that is going on here, and nothing is being done about it. Or we're certainly not doing enough to address what is going on. And that's why I'm asking you, and I came here today. Work's not that important to me that I can't come and support my partner in giving a voice to what is going on, to the people who can't speak for themselves. Doesn't matter whether you're a man or woman, whether you're young, whether you're old, whether you're a child, whether you're handicapped or anything. We are being subjected daily to people accosting us outside Tim Hortons or McDonald's. You've got them standing there asking for money on a daily basis, setting up tents, setting up camps, sleeping in doorways, sleeping in our apartment buildings. We've lost our way, and we need to get it back. And we need to do something because there's a lot of very unhappy people in this city, and somebody's going to get hurt. But do we need somebody to get hurt? Somebody to wake up and listen to what's going on? I don't want to get hurt. I don't want my girlfriend to get hurt. But one day, you're going to read about it, whether it be in the paper or on a radio station or anything. I'm proud to be a part of this city. I'm getting to the point where we're not listening to the people who live here. I supported, I voted for you, Mayor Clayton. I voted for council members to do something. What are we doing? When did the world stop caring about each other? That's the way I look at it. When did we stop caring about each other? Because somebody is going to get hurt. And I don't want it to be a member of my family, or my partner, or her family. Her daughter was chased across a parking lot. She had to lock herself inside the farmer's market. And I got some allowed to just read this.
Sure.
The farmer's market for the past six years has struggled battling the homeless situation downtown, and in the past six years, bylaw or the RCMP, both non-complaint line and 9/11, sixty-six times, those are sixty-six calls in which we felt unsafe in our built market area or just the office hours. Our building has been broken into numerous times. Those are three incidents where allocated to promote a community activity have had to use or repair broken windows, doors locked, or damage to the building. To many, this is, this is a place for small business to come and try and earn some money, to support their family, to put food on the table. I could not count the number of times I felt unsafe leaving my office to walk to my vehicle because of the individuals next to me in the parking lot, or the men that ride the bikes around the area, looking in people's vehicles to, excuse me, to steal stuff. It's terrifying. We under a concern to the priority that our community is not doing anything and is not listening to us. We have been assaulted, grabbed, threatened more times, honestly, than you would know. Sixty-six times is six years. That's pretty sad. And you should make, and these are women as well, working on their own or working as a team, should not be accosted by these people. As I said, it's not everybody. It's a small minority, repeat offenders, drug addicts who are high, who are violent. And they are violent. And I know because I lost my sister to drugs at the age of thirty-two in England, and I spent twelve years battling the drug element in London to the point where it destroyed my family. No person in this world, as a parent, should ever have to bury their child. I lost a driver in my Transportation Logistics Division who lost his daughter to drugs recently, as three months ago here in Grand Prairie, at the age of seventeen. Seventeen! And he came to me last week, and he said to me, he said, Mark, he said, I can't do this anymore. It's too hard. My family is broken. I'm broken. So as I say to all you members, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for the time you've given me to speak, but I feel that we are letting down the good people of this city by allowing the criminal element to gain the upper hand. We need to do something, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Taylor. Just so you're aware of our process, I'll now open it up to council in case they have any specific questions. Then any business that may be arising from your presentation today will be dealt with after a bit of our business. You're more than welcome to stay here. I really appreciate your passion in coming forward. Definitely, I know council shares some of your sentiment, but it's always important for council, our community, to come out and share with council their feelings. So thank you for coming today. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Mr Taylor, for coming and discussing what is something that every city has to deal with, not only Grand Prairie, and I'm sure you're very aware of that, coming from the UK. I work very near to the farmer's market. Some of the stuff that you are talking about, absolutely, I can see. I also do reach out for help from organizations like the Mobile Outreach Team. I would encourage, and they should know, through countless emails, about reaching out to assets like we have in the city, such as the Mobile Outreach Team. They are very quick, they are respectful, they are kind, and they do a great job.
They do a fantastic job. My girlfriend has reached out for three months now, I'd say over a month. They've been very attentive, straight away, came and addressed the situation to lead the individuals away from her property.
That's right. We also have to understand that we live in a country where there is mobility rights. And if people aren't causing, you know, some sort of crime, we, if we don't like what we see, doesn't mean it can't happen. Everybody has the same rights as everybody else. However, when it infringes on your right or, or a business owner and such, I absolutely agree. So I do outreach myself to, to this team. Enforcement Services has been very helpful. RCMP have been very helpful, but they're busy. You know, we have a big population, a young population, and a, and a young team of RCMP members who are, who are dealing with things that, you know, you and I in our everyday lives aren't dealing with. So I urge you to use the avenues that are available to you.
Which, which we are, Councillor Bosch. We reach out to the people. We do it in a proper and supportive manner to ensure that we a proper and informative manner to ensure that we're not just reporting it. If it's something that is a verbal, abusive, threatening act, that is an act that needs to be dealt with. Because, as I said, if you don't do anything about it, somebody will get hurt. And I don't want to get that call at work to say that my girlfriend, who's, who's in her shop on her own, has been assaulted, or attacked, or verbally abused, again, to the point where she doesn't feel safe to go up to work.
It's true. It's true. I would never want you or anybody else that you care about or any other citizen to deal with that. Is there a security system or a security patrol in and around the farmer's market? So, it is what it is, you know? We have security in all our facilities. I have security in my building. Sometimes, we do have to take some of that on us, too.
We were told, Councillor Bosch, that from the mobile perspective, and from the peace officers, and from the RCMP, all of you have stepped up to the plate and addressed and, and felt very passionately about doing something, that their patrols are stepped up, especially early in the morning. Because like I said, there, there is a criminal element that travels around in the very early hours of the morning, because I've seen it on a daily basis. They're not delivering newspapers. That's what I'm saying.
Council has also passed a motion to put money into a patrol.
Okay.
Program that's going to be starting fairly soon, I believe, 24/7. And so we passed that, what, November? December, somewhere in there? So that is coming. We do recognize it as a whole, as do, as do our enforcement partners. And, and we're not, we care as much as you do, in all honesty. I wouldn't want somebody hurt either, myself or, or anybody I work with, or.
Or everybody here as a family.
Right. Mm-hmm. So, I'm very proud of this Mobile Outreach Team. I think it's going to be very exciting to get this patrol out. I think we also recognize, as they do in many other cities, that how we do things has to change as a whole, too. Mental illness is, is something that we deal with. You, you know, you've, you've had to deal with it in your own family. It's very difficult.
I speak passionately because it affected me. It affected my family, and it destroyed my family. And I don't want that to ever happen to anybody else's family. And yeah, I do speak passionately on the, on the fact that everybody has a right. Everybody has a voice. And I want to be the voice of, of my partner, and her family, and everybody else, in saying, what can we do to fix the problem? And like you said, and thank you very much for the words of encouragement there, is, we can only do it as a team. Can't do it alone.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you for coming, and I'll let somebody else talk.
Thanks. Councillor Bressi.
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of what Councillor Bosch said. Thanks for, thanks for coming here. I, this very much is something we, we all live in this community. We all have families in this community. Many of us have businesses in this community. So it's definitely something we see it impacts us, too. And I think this has been very top of mind to councillor, to council. And Councillor Bosch shared some of the things we have been working on, we're working on. Not saying that we're getting perfect, not saying that we're there. But it is something we have been working a lot on. And just, it, it's like you say, this also is a community itself. This council can't solve it on its own. And I think a few ways that the community can help us doing exactly what you're doing today. Let us know and talking to us and helping us have more than just nine ears on the street. So, that's start. But the two other kind of big asks that I've got of the community is, please do reporting these crimes as they happen.
We just.
Good. That's good to hear. And if, for those that are maybe watching that aren't aware, now there's a really easy online reporting system that the RCMP has. So it's not, you have to call and wait on hold to report anymore. You can do it online. And that data really is used to shape our patrols and shape our strategies. So reporting, sometimes it feels like it doesn't do much, but I promise it really does do a lot behind the scenes when people report. We need to know when and where crime's happening. And then kind of the third ask that I'd have of the community is, please do talk to us, but also please help us talk to our senior levels of government, because our police can only do so much if there's no courts that are backing them up. And our mobile outreach program can only do so much if there's no mental health and addictions treatment for people. And so, definitely, we want to hear about it. But also, just my ask is the community also, please help us, let other levels of government know. So, thanks for being here.
Okay. Thanks, Councillor Bressi. I do have Councillor Berg online, who has a comment. And Mr. Taylor, Councillor Berg, as he's attending virtually, he just asked if you could just move a little, move the mic a little closer to you, so he could hear you better. Perfect. Go ahead, Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. And Mark, my heart goes out to you on the loss of your sister. It is, it affects so many people. And trust me when I say this, that this council works every day, every week, to address these same situations that you're bringing up. They're not easy solutions. I have a business downtown. I see it every day as well. There have been, at different points over the years, where I, too, have felt threatened. But this is a priority. We do want to hear from you. So, thank you for coming and, and presenting this, because the more voices that come out, the better. And I do want to echo Councillor Bressi, too, where we do need to lobby the senior levels of government, be it federally for the RCMP or provincially for mental health. Those two, one's cause, one's effect. But, again, thanks for coming. My heart goes out to you and your family, as well to the family of your worker. But again, rest assured, we're working on this. And if you can give us any help that you think might help advance some things along, we're open to it. Thank you.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Berg. Mr. Tyler, I don't see anyone else in the queue. I just, I will echo some of the sentiments that are said. I, too, own a business downtown, have had a situation where my staff don't feel safe. It really takes a neighborhood, a community, to tackle these things. I can tell you that council and administration, at the RCMP, our Mobile Outreach Team, we're working hand in hand with the province on a regular basis to try to find solutions. It's not just about reducing crime. It's about feeling safe in your community, feeling safe outside your business, feeling safe in your neighborhood. And this is a priority for this council. As mentioned, there are, there are operational changes we are instituting. They don't happen quickly, unfortunately. The change is not overnight, as I'm sure you can appreciate. But it is a priority to this council and to this organization. But it starts with people like yourself coming to council and, and engaging other people around you. Like you said, engaging your neighbors downtown.
It's like I said, Mayor Clayton, if you don't ask, you don't get.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to ask. It's like you're going to ask a girl to dance. She's going to say no. You're going to move on to the next person.
Yeah. Well, and that's, the other part of it is, too, is, is although this is a priority, we work on many, many things. And so it's a little bit, some days, like whack-a-mole, right? Like, we're dealing with one issue, and then we're dealing with another issue. And it needs to be front of people's mind, and not just at council level, but in business, you know, with the Chamber of Commerce, with, you know, with local business associations, downtown associations. Maybe you're a tenant at the Prairie Mall, your association there. You need to bring the community and your associations and people together to have these conversations, because it's extremely important, but it is something that's extremely, the outcomes will be extremely valuable to the growth of our community. So thank you for your time today.
I appreciate you listening to me, ladies and gentlemen. I really do. And it means a lot that you actually heard my voice.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mr. Tyler. Appreciate it. Under delegations, I don't know if there's anyone else here to speak to council today. I'm not aware of anyone online that wish to speak to council. I will just ask again, if you're here to speak to council, please come forward. And there is an evening portion for future, if you are interested. It's really simple form to go online and let us know you're coming. There are no notices of motion today. We are, oh, sorry. I apologize. I moved my agenda too far ahead. We're going to go to reports next, under item number seven, 7.1, being the by-election. As council sees in your package there today, there has been a recommendation come forward from administration as it is our, it is the set out for us on behalf of the Municipal Government Act in regards to a timeframe that we must abide by to host the by-election. I know Ms. Valerie Norris Kirk is here for any questions that council may have in regards to this. I don't think there, Ms. Hanson, are you here to introduce this or just take questions? If you're here to introduce, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just for background, just with the unfortunate passing of Councillor Laners, council must, as per Section 165 of the Municipal Government Act, hold a by-election with 100 and, within 120 days of the vacancy. And to meet this requirement, Monday, October 17th, is recommended for the by-election. And in addition to accommodate voters, eight voting stations would be provided on election day, as well as two advanced vote days. The cost to conduct the by-election has been estimated at $129,980, as set out in Appendix A of the 2022 Municipal By-Election Report that was provided. This is an out-of-scope budget item. By-election costs would be covered from the 2025 Election Fund Reserve, with an increase in monthly contributions through the Legislative Services Department to refund the reserve over the next three years in advance of the 2025 election. Follow-up item to the by-election is the fall organizational meeting. City Council currently has established October 17th, 2022, for the annual organizational meeting. Administration is recommending the organizational meeting be changed to Monday, October 24th, to enable the elected council member to take their oath of office on October 24th. This would then allow them to participate in council member training for the remaining part of the week, and ready them for attending the next scheduled council meeting on October the 31st. With this, administration therefore recommends the council pass the Resolutions 1 through 6 as follows, at the Monday, October 17th, as a date for the by-election. To appoint Leona Hanson, City Clerk, as a returning officer, and Valerie Norris Kirk, Deputy City Clerk, as a substitute returning officer, to authorize the returning officer to divide the city into voting subdivisions. To approve that two advanced votes be held by the, for the by-election on Saturday, October the 8th, and Saturday, October the 15th. To approve the 2022 by-election budget as presented in Appendix A. And to approve the change of date for the 2022 council organizational meeting from October 17th to October 24th at 3:00 PM. Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you for that, Ms. Hanson. As it's our first meeting back, I'm a little rusty on everything that's going on. So I apologize and appreciate your patience. I do see Councillor O'Toole in the queue.
I was just going to look after business when it's.
Okay. I'll look to Councillor Blackmore in case she has questions.
I do have two quick questions for Ms. Hanson. You're looking at dividing the city into voting substations. Is this going to be a different alignment than we see in most municipal elections, possibly with less substations? Or do you know that at this point?
Ms. Hanson?
Through the chair to Councillor Blackmore, the eight voting stations, there were eight stations in 2021 general election. So the same number of voting stations will occur. There has been a slight realignment with two voting stations to, to accommodate a better division for population in those two areas. So there was a slight realignment of two areas. But the number of voting stations will remain the same for the by-election.
And I have one more question. Is there any mechanism for someone to vote if they are not available to vote in advance polls and will not be in the city on that day?
Ms. Hanson?
There is, there's no electronic voting mechanism in place for the by-election. Sorry, through the chair.
Thanks, Ms. Blackmore. Councillor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. I guess my question to you is, with several people coming up to me and possibly other councillors, wondering if, why don't you just take ninth place instead of redoing the whole election? Can you give us the information on that so that it's public information as to how this process works?
Ms. Hanson?
Through the chair to Councillor Bosch. Yes, in, in reviewing the requirements of the by-election, we did contact Municipal Affairs for clarification on that point. And at this time, there is no option available to take the next, next candidate in line from the last general election. We are required to have a by-election.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Councillor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. To Leona is, I'm assuming that the advance polls would be held here at City Hall. Is that an assumption?
Ms. Hanson?
Through the chair to Councillor O'Connor. The advance poll dates will be held at Montrose Cultural Centre, to allow for greater room for voters to come and attend.
Thank you.
Great. I see no further questions. So thank you for that. Back to Councillor O'Toole for business arising.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move that council set Monday, October 17th, 2022, as the date for a by-election to fill the vacancy of the office of one councillor position. Do I need to do all of them in turn?
Yeah, let's do them individually. Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Thank you. That motion is in order. Comments or questions on that motion in regards to the date as outlined in your package? Seeing none, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor O'Toole?
Okay. Just get this back up here again. Number two was appoint Leona Hanson. So I recommend that council move to appoint Leona Hanson, City Clerk, as the returning officer, and Valerie Norris Clerk, Deputy City Clerk, as the substitute returning officer.
That motion's in order. Seeing no comments or questions, I'll call the question. And that, too, carries unanimously. Councillor O'Toole?
I move that we authorize the returning officer to divide the city into voting subdivisions.
Right. Seeing no comments or questions, I'll call the question on the third motion. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Councillor O'Toole?
Trying not to upset the computer system here. I move that council approve two advanced votes to be held for by-election on Saturday, October 8th, and Saturday, October 15th, 2022.
That motion is in order. Seeing nobody in the queue with comments or questions, I will call the question. Please vote. Councillor O'Toole, how do you vote?
I, in favor.
Councillor O'Toole votes in favor.
See, I upset the system.
Because you jinxed yourself, councillor. Sorry, that motion carries unanimously. Councillor O'Toole?
I move that council approve the 2022 by-election budget as presented in Appendix A.
Seeing no comments or questions, I'll just give a minute here. I think somebody's looking for the budget. All right. Nobody's in the queue, so I'll call the question.
O'Toole in favor.
Councillor Blackmore, how do you vote? All right. That carries unanimously. And Councillor O'Toole?
Okay, to finish things off, I move to approve the change of date for the 2022 council organizational meeting from October 17th, 2022, to October 24th, 2022, at 3:00 PM.
Great. And that motion is in order. Seeing no. Seeing nobody in the queue with comments or questions, I will call the question. And that carries, oh, I'll just assume, but you never know. I will wait.
Counselor O'Toole votes in favor.
Okay. And that too carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on, under Reports, Item 7.2, Boards and Committee Appointments. This, I will just look, I will introduce it. As you are aware, we had to have some standing committees, council committees, and council representative change. The, the changes are in front of you. This will change, I will tell people now, will change again following the election in October. But from now until October, the council standing committees, council representatives, and council committees are in front of you. I'm looking for a motion to receive these or comments or questions. I'll recognize Counselor Blackmore.
If you're ready for the motion?
Sure, I'll just see if Counsel Bressi had a question first. Okay, Counsel Bressi?
Thank you. I was just noticing on the standing committees that, Mayor Clayton, you're not named as ex-official on that. Is that an error, or is that?
That's just a typo.
So then.
On the infrastructure one, you mean?
Yes, I just suggest we move it with that amendment.
Perfect. Any other comments or questions? That one will be amended to recognize myself as ex-official on infrastructure and economic development. Oh, no, because that is a development board, that's, I'm actually not ex-official, so that is correct. Right, okay, we're good. So there was no error. Nice try. Counselor Blackmore?
Just for the record, I didn't think there was, okay?
Counselor Blackmore?
I would move that council approve the recommendations for standing committee appointments and board committee appointments as presented and not as amended.
Perfect, thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no comments or questions, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on, there is no committee business, as council was on a break, and we're moving on to item number nine, the Minister of Culture. I will turn, look, I can do this. I guess the letter was sent to me. I was gonna see if Ms. Casualy had something to say. But if you didn't hear, Grand Prairie was awarded the, to host the 2024 Alberta Winter Games. We're extremely excited about this. Minister Orr was up to make that announcement. It was truly due to a lot of hard work put in from the bid committee. Our administration put a lot of time into this bid. We're extremely excited about this opportunity. As we know, Grand Prairie does a great job getting behind games that we host, whether it's volunteering, whether it's corporately supporting it. We truly are a great game city, and we look forward to showing off our facilities and showing off our community to all of the athletes, parents, coaches, officials that will be coming to Grand Prairie for the Alberta Winter Games in 2024. This piece of correspondence is truly just in your package for information, but if somebody wanted to receive it officially, I see Counsel Bressi's in the queue.
Well, I, there is a recommended motion in here.
Perfect, there you go.
There to make if you'd like.
Excellent.
All right, I'd move that council direct administration to contact regional partners regarding their interest for cost sharing and gifts in kind associated with hosting the 2024 Alberta Winter Games. And just to, just to speak to this, I'm excited for, I'm excited for the games. It was great, Minister Orr being up here and really highlighting how special the facilities are in our region, and highlighting us as a special region, and I think that is a lot because of regional cooperation. It's, we've had some big successes with the Regional Recreation Committee. We've had some big successes with hosting past games with other municipal partners. And so I hope that it's something that I think we could go alone, but I sure hope we don't have to go alone.
Perfect, thanks for that motion, Counsel Bressi. Just acknowledge that our regional partners have written letters of support in our bid. They were very collaborative in regards to Grand Prairie's application for this. And as we know, we do not actually house all the facilities required. We don't have a ski hill in the city limits. And with the 18, potentially 19, sports that they're looking to host during the Winter Games, a regional collaborative approach will be truly a key to success of this game. So that motion is in order. I do not see any comments or questions, so I will call the question on that. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for that, Counsel Bressi. Moving on to delegation business, we had one delegation here today, Mr. Mark Tyler. I will look for any business that may be arising or questions for administration. Counselor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm, just a question to Protective and Social Service on the status of the team that's supposed to be put on the ground? I'd like to have an idea of where that's at.
Sure, Counselor Director Emanuel. Like I said, it's been a few weeks.
I appreciate, I can appreciate that. No, fair question. So as was mentioned, funding from council was authorized as part of Budget 2022, which came into effect in January. So administration had been exploring adding an additional unit to enforcement services to provide peace officers in that role. However, there was some human resources challenges that have limited our ability to do that. So in the meantime, we did want to get the project moving forward, so we've engaged a local security company that's working with us right now and is presently trying to scale up the staffing resources to be able to deploy. I'm optimistic that we should have the first boots on the ground here later this month.
Perfect. Good, Counselor O'Connor? Sure, I got four other people in the queue. Perfect, thank you. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm wondering if we can do some marketing on our own, letting the public know that statistically, we are safer than what we once were. I think people need to know that. It doesn't change the fact if you don't feel safe, that perhaps doesn't matter. But I think the public needs to know what our city is doing and what our enforcement services, RCMP, and special units are doing. I think the more we share what we're doing publicly, the potential more engagement we get through, through our citizen base. You know, if that means increased in, you know, the typical neighborhood watch, that everybody's looking out for everybody a little bit more, and we just start the conversations, and maybe, maybe we need to start that conversation and head these, these, you know, collaborative approaches between community members and ourselves.
Thanks for that, Director Emanuel.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. I, I think that's good feedback, and it's timely because council also, in their capital plan, approved and then set us off with the terms of reference for our police services review. Now, our police services review, it's not just about cost, it's about service delivery and what expectations we have in the community. So as part of that process, it's rather robust. It's been months of research and development right now. We've toured around other municipalities and pursued best practices. And early this fall, that report is gonna come forward to this council and the community as a whole. And it's gonna provide both a historical state of our community, what the current state is, and what emerging trends, both opportunity and risks are for us. The delegation really hit on something important today. He, he frankly said he's very pleased with the frontline service providers he's seen, and that, that's what I heard anyways, that the outreach workers, the peace officers, the police officers. Where I believe he was feeling frustration is systems-related issues, which are some of the things that we've identified and flagged as well. And simply just saying there is systems issues, and that's not enough. So we, as part of the policing review here, will also have some erasing awareness about what work the city has underway in regarding to improve the downstream efficiency of the justice system, the health system, social systems, as well as what opportunities exist to further improve those moving forward. So, yeah, very timely.
Great, thank you for that. Counselor Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. One of the points raised by the delegation is a kind of anecdotal statement that crime is going up in Grand Prairie. And it always bothers me somewhat when I hear someone make statements that are anecdotal and don't have any necessary data attached to it. So my question to Director Emanuel is if he can respond with some statistics or data that might tell us whether this is a true or not true statement. And that's not to say that the delegation's concerns are not important. I just want that clarification. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Blackmore. Counselor or Director Emanuel?
Okay, fair question and, and fair comments from the delegation. What I can say is that certainly crime has evolved in the community. So compared to 2014, 2015, 13, that, that particular segment where Grand Prairie was getting a lot of national media attention, the, the criminal instances are, are down significantly from that period of time. And those were really violent. What was driving that was frankly, drug, the drug industry and, and competition that was occurring within the industry. And most of the victimization, although it was violent crime, were criminal on criminal related sort of offenses. However, where the shift has occurred is the communities moved beyond that. There was a lot of focused attention on addressing that. But what we're seeing now is increased instances in complaints regarded to lower-end social or criminal behaviors, things such as the thefts that were mentioned and the, the loitering, public disturbances. So certainly the prevalence of those activities has, has become more prevalent as far as them being reported to the police. But the more significant stuff we were facing in 2014, 15, as far as like robberies and homicides and assaults, those have declined. But we're having to pivot to address these, these other causes now. Now, if somebody's involved in a homicide, it's a pretty clear path in the justice system. You catch them, hopefully, and usually, they would go to jail for a period of time. On the social disorder stuff, it's a whole different ballgame. As was mentioned, in many instances, the police may catch somebody committing an offense for a theft, but they're not gonna go to jail for that. And that means that those members still remain in the community, and we have to find alternative ways to reduce and prevent that activity from reoccurring. And that's some of the struggle that we've been facing and some of the things we're trying to work through right now.
Thank you for that. I don't see anyone else in the queue. I had a question, Director Emanuel. If you don't have the information, that's fine, maybe just email council. Do you happen to have an update? Can you provide any information on how the drug treatment court process is, is working in our city currently? And where it's at?
That will be a great thing to come forward and, and update in the future. My understanding is it's still in its infancy, and I don't think its first participants have really made its way into the, the process yet.
But it is operating, and there are participants currently.
I'll have to just get confirmation on that.
Thank you. Counselor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm just wondering, we keep getting similar crimes being committed by the same individuals. And I'm wondering if there is any move to look at frequency? That if you, three strikes, you're out, then you do go to jail? Because we're seeing the same people committing the same crimes, and this has to stop. Period. Please, any comments?
Director Emanuel?
No, that, that's a fair point, and it's an observation that we've made too. There's a very small number of individuals that have a disproportionate impact on the incidents that we're talking about. That being said, the creating the profile to successfully bring them into the correctional system based on the volume of offenses that they're, they're committing is something that we're actively working on right now. And what we intend to do is, for most of our offenders, what we usually try to do is diversionary stuff, especially on low-end criminal offenses, where we don't want somebody going to prison for doing a shoplift. However, if we've been offering alternatives, if you're facing addictions and you're turning down treatment, if you have mental health concerns, and you're not engaging in counseling and therapy and those sorts of things, there's a small segment of people that are like banned from all the shelters, banned from all the service providers, and they're just in this netherland right now. What we're trying to do is work on a program in conjunction with the outreach teams, with peace officers, with police, with some of our social partners, health partners, to show that, document that in a, in a total picture. So when we go forward to the courts, we're going forward to the court saying, this isn't just a list of the offenses the person's been given, or has been accused of committing, but these are all the services we've provided them up to this point, and they've chosen not to engage. So with choice comes consequence, and it's our hope that we're gonna get buy-in from the justice system that some of these folks are gonna get a timeout. Because as was mentioned by Counselor Bosch earlier today, we don't live in a society where the police can proactively or preemptively stop somebody from committing many of the offenses that we're talking about. It's, unfortunately, we're in a place where we have to respond after the fact or try to be present before it occurred. But if we have a pathway where people that are just showing a continual pattern of militants towards the society's rules, that hopefully we can work with the justice system to at least force them into some form of timeout.
Thanks for that. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just a little bit of information on the drug treatment court. I deal with them in a, in a very minimal scale, but I can tell you through the Downtown Association, several of these people who are going through this program are giving back to our community by volunteerism. So I think that should be recognized that it's starting to work, and although it's in its infancy, it, it's a good program to date.
Great, thank you for that. All right, seeing nothing further, nobody else in the queue, I'll move on. There is no notice of motion. Not a public, no, we're good. No notice of motion, no, and we are not gonna recess tonight. There was no scheduled delegations for the evening portion. However, so we are gonna go on to unfinished business. Item 14.1, which is a transportation system bylaw, C-1452 revised, and I'll look to Ms. Coulter for introduction.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here again for the third reading of bylaw C-1452 revised. A little background on this again is the Provincial Highways Development and Protection Act requires that the city, by bylaw, establish a transportation system in accordance with the transportation study report. The bylaw must be approved by the Minister of Alberta Transportation or responsible for Alberta transportation before coming into effect. City previously submitted bylaw C-1452 for approval. It was rejected due to an access being shown onto Highway 43 that has not been approved by Alberta Transportation at this time. The revised bylaw removes this access. If at a later date AT approves this access and city has provided an appropriate transportation study updating our road network, the city could resubmit this bylaw for approval.
Great, thank you for that introduction. Counselor Blackmore?
I was going to make third reading motion.
Go ahead, and we can just have the discussion once.
I move council to give third reading to bylaw C-1452 revised, being the transportation system bylaw.
Perfect, that motion's in order. Comments or questions? I see Counsel Bressi.
Great, if I may ask a question of a minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a question I've got is, I'm gonna try again to persuade council to postpone this while we do a bit, do a bit more work. Question for a minute, so we haven't had a up-to-date bylaw in some time now. And if we did take a couple more months to not update our bylaw while we did more work and perhaps some advocacy on this, what kind of risks do we face? What could happen to us, and how likely are those to materialize?
Ms. Coulter?
Through the Chair. The risk would be very minimal to the city. The biggest thing that could be happen is if someone were to submit a roadside development permit in that area, the province could deny it and prevent that development from moving forward. The chances of that happening right now are probably not very high, so the risk would be considered low.
Great, thank you.
I just ask, echoing on Counsel Bressi's comment, just so the rest of council is clear, you know, the, that the risk is small. Do you happen to have a map? you know, that the risk is small. Do you happen to have a map that you could put up for council to see the land area that we're discussing and what the potential risk is? If you don't, that's fine. I'll just leave it for council in case there's any other questions for administration. And then I'll recognize, while you're looking for that, I'll recognize Councilor Blackmore.
I have a question actually for Councilor Bressi.
Go for it.
What changes do you anticipate will happen that you would like us to hold off on this motion?
Councilor Bressi?
Yeah, and for me, it's, I'd like us to, so the motion I will be making, making if nothing else happens, is to direct administration to bring forward amendments supporting an additional Highway 43 access point. So I want to keep that access point that we've always envisioned there. I want us to do some work to justify that and do some work with the province, saying we need that, we need that access point. And I want to enter into full debate now, but just for me, when somebody's looking at buying land or developing land there, I want them to see that access point in our long-term plan. I don't want it to just disappear.
All right. Ms. Coulter, were you able to find a map or no? Director Glavin? Right. So maybe you can just walk us through sort of what we're looking at here. That'd be great.
So this is just the overall city map. So long term, there is an access in the Hugheslake area that connects this road straight across to Highway 43. Other than that, the only other accesses that we have in this general area is the flyover that's proposed, just kind of at the base of these merge lanes or the interchange lanes, and the access that currently exists at 130 Second Avenue. So there is a gap, except for this access that is the one that is being questioned.
Okay. Yeah, personally, I'm just going to add one piece here. I appreciate the map. I echo some of Councilor Bressi's concern. As mentioned to me, this doesn't preclude us from lobbying after if the bylaw was approved. I do though, feel that our success rate of lobbying any level of government after the fact is pretty low. So I do think that that access on Highway 43, on the 43X there is important to future potential development in that area. And I do share Councilor Bressi's concern. And if, as mentioned by administration, maybe not to appear to be confrontational with the minister, not that we're not looking to work with the ministry, just trying to find solutions for future growth and opportunities in this region would be a huge success. So I won't be supporting this motion, not because I don't want to work with the ministry, not because I don't want to get this bylaw passed, just because there isn't a lot of risk by delaying this briefly. And I think our communication with the ministry could be the fact that it's not that we don't want to get this bylaw done. It's not that we don't want to get this work done. We just need a bit more time to sit down with you and figure out solutions so that we don't sterilize parts of our land for future potential development. Councilor Bressi?
Great. Well, if I may, I'll make a motion that I can.
So I do have a motion on the floor.
Well, sorry, I'm going to make a motion to.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead. Thank you.
So I would move that council direct administration to prepare amendments supporting an additional Highway 43 access point and postpone third reading this bylaw until those amendments can be considered.
I just wonder if those are done differently, if we postpone and then make your vote. Tell me your motion again. Sorry, Councilor Bressi.
So direct administration to prepare amendments supporting an additional Highway 43 access point. So like suggested in the reports, Admin said that we could direct them to do that. And then bring this bylaw back once those amendments are prepared. So I'm definitely happy to split that. The reason I kind of put them together was because I don't know a date to postpone it to. I don't want to postpone it definitely because that usually means we don't want to touch it.
Right.
But I thought putting in action to postpone it till after would work.
I'll just check with our legislative services if you're fine with the motion of, as Councilor Bressi has laid it out. Or if you'd prefer that we postpone with a date? Yeah, okay. So maybe just a check with administration. Director Glavin, what's a reasonable amount of timeframe in your opinion for conversation regarding this with the ministry regarding this bylaw? Or Ms. Coulter, whoever's prepared to answer this.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll take a quick stab at it and look for it to be supplemented by Ms. Coulter if necessary. In order to have the ministry consider the access, we would have to do a transportation study, which should be in the magnitude of somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 to support our ask or request to have that in there. That's just a rough order of magnitude estimate at this point, but based on similar studies, that's the range we'd be looking at.
Sorry, and I was not clear. I meant timeframe, but that's okay. Councilor Bressi, your motion.
I have a point of order.
Go ahead, Councilor Blackmore.
Would it not be a simpler process if we simply defeat the motion on the floor and then refer the matter back to administration?
That works too. Councilor Bressi?
Yeah, and I guess get into the procedural. What happens if we decide, oh, actually, that was a good bylaw, we want to bring it back. Is there a waiting period on it? Or I guess we just have to make a motion to reconsider. Just what are the ramifications defeating the bylaw?
Ms. Coulter or Director Glavin?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the ramifications of defeating it this time, we don't believe that there's a significant ramification. I think we'd be probably looking to legislative services to confirm that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We can look into that and get right back to you.
Yep, perfect. So we could also, so that in case there was concern, we could postpone this to a future council meeting without a finite date.
Yeah, I'm open to whatever wording. Just I don't want to say postpone indefinitely because usually I think that means you're killing.
Yeah, so let's just.
So just move to postpone to a future council meeting?
Perfect.
Yeah, and just speak to that motion if I may?
Yep.
Yeah, so we, last time I, I think it's important because highway access to this land is really important. And last time we spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of time talking about advocacy with the province. I spent a lot of time talking about advocacy with the province, how I think it's just easier advocacy to do that front loaded rather than back loaded. But also would just point to, even if we think we can get this changed at a later date, somebody looking at buying land or developing land, they're looking at the long-term plans of this area. And I think having, if somebody's going to read our plans and that access point isn't there, how can they ever know that we might advocate for this access in the future? I just think this land looks a lot more attractive. It is a lot more attractive if it's got really good highway access. So for me, this is a pretty significant access in our long-term plans. And if the province really wants to put their foot down, that's fine. I don't think it's worth fighting them for. But I just want to make sure the minister understands how important this is to industrial development. Because I really do think our goals with this, with this land are completely aligned with provincial goals. I just don't know how much the minister would have been briefed on this. So I think there's some political work to be done, making sure that the minister understands what's going on here.
Great. Thanks for that. Seeing no comments or questions on the motion to postpone this to a future council meeting, I will call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Bressi, you had a subsequent motion?
Yeah, and just because we didn't give any actual timeline there, I'd also move that council direct the mayor administration to undertake, undertake appropriate advocacy for access points on Highway 43. So I don't want to be too prescriptive in terms of, hey, the mayor write the letter, administration do this. I really trust our mayor to work with our city manager, our governmental to figure out what's appropriate.
Perfect. Thank you. That motion's in order. Any comments or questions in regards to that motion? Seeing none, I'll give a minute for legislative services to catch up. And then I'll call the question whenever you're ready. Perfect. Please vote. And that motion is carried unanimously. Seeing no other business arising from that item, I'll move on. There was no public hearings tonight, no evening delegation business. I move to council member reports, and I'm going to start with Councilor O'Connor.
How did I know that you were going to do that? Thank you very much. It's been a little bit busy, even though there was a break. Attended to healthcare with Minister Copping and AHS, was a very valuable session and Counselor Bosch and CEO Nikolai. Thank you very much. Hey, had a blonde moment. So anyway, that was very well done. Attended the Peace Library System in Fairview, where we conducted business for the library system and brought, we had tabled a report from a consultant on efficiency, and that went very, very well. Attended the sessions on snow and ice control engagement process. And then with a number of counselors, did summer camps with the Champions Gym and newcomers to Grand Prairie. And they were so exciting and just interesting. So we all, thanks to the leadership from Dylan and Gladys and Chris Thieson, these kids are just buying into it. And they were voting on flying cars and whether or not they should, you know, get rid of dandelions. And they voted no, so they could protect the bees. So it was pretty tremendous. And then went to the Sunrise House groundbreaking, which is a big kudos to them for doing that. Attended a branding workshop and opening of the North Bike Skills Park and an Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting. And unfortunately, went to the Celebration of Life for Bill Walker. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to go through some of my obligations to the council. I attended an accessibility legislation working group meeting. It was the second meeting. Mayor Clayton attended the first one, but because of overload in the office, she asked me to, to attend. It was via Zoom. And we're just getting started. We're trying to get some information. And what this is all about is the current disability policy in Alberta. We just have policies. We don't have legislation. And Alberta has a patchwork of policies to address disability, but has no central principles that would ensure a proactive and consistent approach. Most disability policy has been implemented to address specific issues and was passed between 2000 and 2009. And some of the key examples are the Alberta Human Rights Act, the Advocate for Persons with Disabilities Act, the Persons with Development, Developmental Disabilities Foundations Act, Premier's Council on the Status of Persons with Disabilities Act, Service Dogs Act, Blind Persons Rights Act, Income and Employment Supports Act, and Assure Income for Severely Handicapped Act, Family Support for Children and with Disabilities Act, and Protection for Persons in Care Act. And then we have the Alberta, or sorry, the Public Health Act. So what this group is doing is trying to get some of the concerns that each municipality has and bring it forward. And we're going to have open discussion and try and propose something for the government to make it official legislation. And I don't have any more information on that right now because it's just in its infancy, but we're gathering information. The second item that I want to talk about is the combative sports. We, myself and Vice Chair Daryl Stobie, attended the Alberta, I mean, the Association of Boxing Commissions and MMA. And it was a full seven days of workshops and interesting facts that are coming up. We attended a referee course, inspectors, MMA rules, boxing, the list goes on. Like I said, we started at nine o'clock in the morning, and we were done somewhere between 4:30 and 7:00 every night. So did get out to go and do a little sightseeing, but not much. It was a very, well, because of the airfare, 30% of the people that were scheduled to be there got caught up in the airports and couldn't get out. We were very successful that we, we had a four-hour delay. And other than that, good attendance. And so that's what I had. I just wanted to touch on, I had it written down here somewhere. I did attend the Grand Con and the Sunrise House ribbon cutting and, and shovel digging, get things started. One of the things that I needed to kind of get my head out of, in good space, I ended up going down to the Crystal Lake and watching the swans for the last couple of weeks. We've watched them from being just eggs to now there's five of them floating around with their parents. And I remember a time when we couldn't necessarily see swans, trumpeter swans in Grand Prairie. There was a very minor amount. And to see five swans plus their parents was a good thing and kind of relaxing for myself. Also, I attended the opening of the bike park, Bike Skills Park there. And yeah, kind of been going there quite a bit to just see how successful it is. And I think Grand Prairie did a good thing. And we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilor Blackmore.
We seem to have a camera issue on this side of the council chambers tonight. Camera does not want to shine on Mike or Kevin. Don't know why. So like the rest of council, even though we were on council break, it's been a busy, busy couple of weeks since our last council meeting. I did attend a community orchard tour in Hillside. It's very interesting what the city and particularly what Caleb is doing with, with orchard trees in the community. And I encourage people to go and have a look at those. I attended board orientation for the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association, also the Bike Skills Park grand opening and the ribbon cutting at Sunrise House's new location. I looked in on the Snow and Ice Control Town Hall, spent some time there, talked to a couple of people who came by and was glad to have their input. I attended an event called Prosecco in Politics, a night of women in politics, and listened to our MLA Tracy Allard, Kim Taves, Mayor Kate Potter, and Mayor Jackie Clayton talk about the bricks and bouquets of being a woman in politics. I attended in Calgary, the Pacific Northwest Economic Regions Conference, which took place a couple of weeks ago. The Pacific Northwest Economic Region includes Montana, Idaho, Washington, Oregon, Alaska, Yukon, Northwest Territories, Saskatchewan, Alberta, and BC. And so it's interesting to see all of those different states and provinces come together to talk about joint concerns. No one would be surprised to know that two of the biggest concerns are distribution of goods and shortage of skilled employees. It was interesting to listen to the Lieutenant Governor of Washington, whose name is Benny Hack, because he is so passionate when he speaks about American or US and Canadian relations and the value and importance we have with each other and the fact that we are each other's most significant trading partner. He was definitely interesting to hear. And another session I really enjoyed, really talked a lot about sustainable airline fuel and the development of sustainable airline fuel in Canada, which is a leading, we are a leading country in that endeavor. I also attended a mixer with David Goldstein and his team, who are here from Travel Alberta. And I spoke on behalf of the mayor and council at Bill Walker's Celebration of Life. Bill started as a firefighter in Grand Prairie in 1973 and rose up through the ranks to eventually become Fire Chief and Director of Protective Services before retiring in 2013. And so he, he was in that role through a time of enormous growth in the city when providing emergency and essential services. when providing emergency and essential services was not an easy task. And we thank him for his years of service. And our condolences go out to his family, friends, and relatives.
Thank you for that update. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I guess I'd like to talk about the branding workshop that we did as a council. We did that July 13th, so some time ago, prior to the break. I think this is important for the public to know that the initiative to market ourselves is something that council is taking very, very seriously, whether it's regionally, nationally, or globally. We want to progress as a mid-sized city and become as large as possible with taking in the facts of pride of place and quality of life. So that is very important to this council. And just the beginning stages of this branding workshop, I think, is key. And the public needs to know that we want to promote our community and our region. So that was, that is something that isn't easily done because everybody's doing it. So we're just going to have to find the ways to make ourselves, you know, stand on top. The Snow and Ice Control Town Halls, I would have loved to have seen more people attend. There was a number of them. And snow and ice is a huge issue for many people in this city and region. But we need to hear from you. And forgive me if I say do it now and send emails because the town halls are over. But nonetheless, we do need to hear from people. This is important for your quality of life. Attended the art gallery board meeting, community futures board meetings. The conversation with Minister Copping. And just to add to councillor O'Connor's comments to that, I went in there with some doubt, just to where our healthcare staff and our patients, what they're feeling at this point in time. And I came actually out of there more positive than I thought I would be. They are, they are listening. And I don't believe by the conversations that we had that it's just going to be a hamster wheel that spins. I think there is going to be results. And I look forward to the words that they spoke of that gathering. The mixer at Centre 2000 on July 28th, that was a great mixer to showcase and congratulate the many businesses and for the years of being a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So I was happy to attend to that. Many, many members, some as old as 50 years old. So great to be a part of that. Of course, the Sunrise House as well, the groundbreaking. And probably the most time I spent was at the street performers. I co-chaired that with Wayne Ailing, and it went fabulous this year. Finally, a year that was back to normal, where we could have people out on the streets again. In conjunction with that festival, we had the Rib Fest, the Night Market, and the Farmer's Market, Street Market. So four different events going on in the core that weekend. Lots for people to do, lots for people to enjoy. And you don't have to spend a ton of money to have some fun and have a good day. Seeing the smiling faces and people enjoying themselves, you know, we've been missing that in this past few years. A long weekend, but nonetheless extremely valuable for our community. So I think that's about it for now. I'll let somebody else talk.
Great. Thanks, councillor Bosch. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. I got to attend a lot of these events that were mentioned. I won't go over those again, but a couple of things that weren't mentioned. Well, one thing that I'm doing is with Alberta municipalities, I'm on a working group that includes some of our board members, along with rural municipalities, Alberta board members, and the provinces asked us to come up with allocation formula for municipal infrastructure funding. So just a little bit of piece of work they gave us over the summer. It's involved almost weekly trips to Edmonton because I think that has been something that's important to do in person. So it's been a lot of work, but our deadline is this Friday. And we've got two more days of talks scheduled, and I'm actually optimistic about it. So it's been, so I just want to thank council for indulging me in not being as present locally as I've been working on that. So I know that I haven't been as present as I like to be, so thank you to council for that. The highlight, though, is the transit relaunch. It's councillor O'Connor and I got to ride some buses on Saturday. I've now been on two on-demand trips and five fixed route trips. And I'm ecstatic to see how well, at least from my perspective, on-demand is going. It feels like it's been four long years. I've been saying, we need on-demand, we need on-demand, we need on... And it's finally here, and I'm excited to see its potential in this community. I think it'll be great for now, but I'm really looking forward to future conversations that I hope we have about using it to extend hours of service and also to bring more integration between people and accessible transit with traditional transit. I think there's a lot that can be said for dignity if people in a wheelchair are using the same transit bus everybody else is. So I think there's a lot of potential for on-demand. Excited to talk about the fixed routes. They've been a little bit more challenging. I think there's still issues with people learning their rides and asking a lot of questions of drivers, which slows them down. And they're not on schedule yet, it doesn't feel like, but they were way behind on schedule on Saturday, really a little bit behind schedule today. So that's good progress. And something I really want to hear our senior management, our senior management to hear is incredible how our bus drivers are. Seven drivers right now. They're, I can't imagine that it's unstressful to learn an entire new system. I know I've seen a few cranky customers, and I've seen many more confused customers. And every single driver I've seen is nothing but enthusiastic, optimistic, cheerful, answering questions. I've been so impressed by our drivers and how they're leading this. So really, really, really appreciate our drivers. And I've talked to about 30 passengers, and the overwhelming feedback I'm getting is, yeah, we're kind of confused, we're figuring it out. But also a lot of optimism about how much better the system will be. And they're either neutral on it, or they're excited about it. I haven't heard too many customers beyond confusion say, ah, this just sucks. And which I'm kind of surprised because you expect a big change to have more people say that. So, and I think that really is probably largely because of how well our drivers are leading this with their attitude. So really, really appreciate our staff. And also, I know on Saturday, we ran into Mr. Harvard. We ran into transit supervisors. So really appreciate management not just being in a back office somewhere and hoping it goes well, but really being on the trenches, riding the buses, smoothing things over, saying hi to people. So really impressed with our staff in this transition.
Great. Thanks, councillor Bressi. I have quite a few things. Many of them have, pardon me. Oh, I'll go to councillor Berg first. Go ahead, councillor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, glad to be involved. So Nighthawk had a board meeting on July 26th. And one of the exciting topics of conversation was the Alberta Winter Games. As we mentioned, we don't have a ski hill here in the city, but we do have one in the region, so that's one of our partners. Nighthawk also looks after Bear Par Three Golf down at South Bear Creek. Just want to remind people to take some time and enjoy South Bear Creek Park and the mini golf, well, Par Three Golf. Mini Golf is down at Muscati Park. I had the pleasure of attending Grand Con, which was a thrill for me because I'm a, I am a nerd. And it was great to see so many people come out and absolutely enjoy this event. So many people thrilled with the quality of celebrities to come, but also the activities all around it. And also I'd seen that a couple of the celebrities actually did get out and really take advantage of their trip here and very much became tourists of the area. And even one of them asked that, I showed them some art here in the community, too, some local art. So it was a nice opportunity for me, but also it was great to see that these people were sharing some of the best things of Grand Prairie on social media. Also, it was a nice coincidence where a doctor being recruited by the hospital had come by my place of work and just had casually asked, is there anybody to take me around and show me the city? Now, Mayor Clayton has said in the past, she's taken some doctors around the city to show them, again, the quality of life that we have to offer. So I took this doctor on a three-hour trip, not only through the city, but down to Evergreen Park and actually the river. So this doctor, originally from Iran, now living in Toronto, is looking to move to Grand Prairie. And it was beautiful because twice the doctor actually said, this is heaven. Coming from where he comes from, he stressed so many times that we need to appreciate what we have here in Canada and places like Grand Prairie. Councillor O'Toole mentioned one of those places was Crystal Lake, where we were looking at some swans. The other place was down at the river, the Wapiti River, which, again, many of us would take for granted, but from somebody be it from Toronto or even a foreign country like Iran, those types of river valleys just don't happen with that clean, fresh water. So that was quite interesting. And actually, where that originated, he wanted to see where our water supply comes from, which was interesting from a doctor. So I'm hoping that he comes. He, I did run into him, and he was, he said he made an offer and needed a witness for a signature, and that was the last I'd seen him. So hopefully that's optimistic news that we're adding another doctor to our hospital. And also, although we had the delegation earlier today talking about downtown and some of the negatives, there was one weekend in particular that was amazing for me. And I just became a local tourist and just took it all in, where I took in the Rib Fest, the Street Performers Festival. I went to the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie, where they have a new exhibition up of artwork inspired by jazz music, walked through the Night Market, and then the Farmer's Market, they've got the street closed off and have a number of outdoor booths. And the weather was perfect. So from my standpoint as a local tourist, I was thrilled with that weekend and took in absolutely everything that I could. And it's been a really wonderful summer here in the city. And just kudos to the administration for the work that they do. But also, there's more events even coming up. The summer isn't even near close to wrapping up and a lot to go on to. So thank you, and that's my report.
Thanks very much, councillor Berg. And now I'll go with my report because there's no one left. I just wanted to say, yes, it was a very proud moment to attend the ground turning for the Sunrise House. I sit as a volunteer on that capital campaign to fundraise money for a new, larger, improved facility. And so to see the sod turning and be part of that was a great day, a great for our region and great for our city. I also, with many others, attended the ribbon cutting at Crystal Lake Bike Skills Park, which we are continually hearing great feedback about and something that council, this council and previous councils should be proud of as an added amenity to our city. On a sad note, I attended the funeral of Lionel Jones, who was a fellow Rotarian and an entrepreneur in our city on many, many different sort of sectors, will truly be missed by his family and his friends. With councillor O'Connor, sorry, O'Toole, I attended the welcoming of a federal government-sponsored refugee family who arrived at the airport direct from Afghan, Afghanistan. And this Afghan family, children in tote, got off the plane. We had flags, we had all of it, welcomed to Grand Prairie. And I think they were a little bit shell-shocked. Their flight was almost 24 hours straight. But it was, it was a really neat experience to welcome these refugees right into the city of Grand Prairie. Stopped by the Grand Prairie Outdoor Pool 60th Anniversary Celebration. Thank you to staff and those who organized that day of celebration. And truly something special to my heart, as we almost didn't have that outdoor pool. So it was great to see that it came to fruition, and we celebrated the 60th anniversary. Since councillor Thiessen's not here, I'll mention that I, as a public member, I also sit on the Grand Prairie Storm Board. And they are gearing up for the hockey season. Home opener is coming later this month, and they'll have a full day of activities and a great lineup of players. They're working very hard to produce an excellent team that, fingers crossed, makes the playoffs this year. That is absolutely the goal. In some advocacy work, had a meeting with Mayor Potter from Sexsmith as we continually strive to improve our relationships in the region, across the province, and across the country. I like to regularly meet with other elected leaders. And on another note, met with Ms. Shereen Griffiths from GPRC to talk about some of the advocacy priorities that Northwest Polytech has. Had the privilege to speak at councillor Lerner's service. It was a very special day for all of us, and thank you to council for allowing me that privilege. Attended Minister Orr's announcement, as mentioned earlier. Great day celebration to announce that Grand Prairie will be hosting the 2024 Alberta Winter Games. We truly are an excellent game city, and I know we will do a great job in this games as well. With councillor Bressi and councillor Blackmore, attended the Penwar Conference. As mentioned, it's an economic development conference of the Pacific Northwest. I had the opportunity to speak on a panel called Forest for the Trees, which was a climate change and active forest management panel with Alberta Forest Products Association, as well as a representative from West Fraser and from the Ministry of Agriculture and Forestry. So it was a great panel to share stories of, you know, what we're dealing with, different species, invasive species, as well as risk management and forest management. It was a very interesting panel, and I enjoyed that. As mentioned, Grand Prairie and this council really wanted to kick off, coming out of the pandemic, a year of sort of celebration. And I think that there, it has to be recognized that our organization and our community and our region has truly done an exceptional job. We are providing events and opportunities and bringing people together. And just day after day, it simply amazes me, the opportunities that are out there for people to get friends together, bring family together, and to get out there and celebrate. That weekend of the street performers and the Rib Fest and the Night Market, Rotary also had a ride and shine. There was also the East Coast Garden Party, which is supported by our large-scale tourism fund. So, you know, there seems to be just a real buildup of events. One that I want to mention that's coming up, Experience Grand Prairie. The first, first time this event will happen is this August 26th and 27th. It's a new event. It's a free event in our community. It starts off on the Friday night with a sort of a more adult-focused event. Free entertainment, Trooper will be there. Opening for Trooper is an ACDC tribute band, so lots of fun. Right downtown this year, we're experiencing Grand Prairie. We're highlighting the downtown and the renovation and rehabilitation that has happened there. So it's going to be a lot of fun. Then on the Saturday, it's more family-focused. There will be live entertainment as well from 12 to 5 as well. There's a passport where you can go around and then collect stamps to win prizes. There's a treasure hunt. There is a municipal showcase where kids can look at fire trucks and really get to know more about what happens in our day-to-day operations. It really will be a fun day experiencing Grand Prairie, and it's all free. So it's a great way to wrap up your summer as parents probably have a little bit of a celebration as they head back to, the kids head back to school. So it's a weekend of celebration for family and friends alike. This weekend, though, I do have to remind people, Bear Creek Folk Fest, fifth annual event, and it's finally back in full-fledged, in person. And I hear that it's almost sold out, which, you know, if you think about it, it's kind of hard to believe because it's such a large space and there's so many different times. But the schedule is online. It runs all day. Saturday and Sunday, starts in the afternoon on Friday. Great lineup of entertainers. It will be a great weekend, and knock on the wood. The weather looks great. I encourage people to get out, enjoy the community, enjoy the hard work that's been put into this event. It, too, is supported by city council and the Large Scale Tourism Fund. So that is it, my report. Welcome back, council. Get ready. We've got lots of work to do, and I look forward to seeing you all again soon. I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.